I move that we allow the maximum amount for one month's rent assistance.
Second.
Further discussion?
Sho.
I, Deco.
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, item four, consider entrance variance application from Chad and Lyndell Furman with possible action.
Good evening.
Can you state your name here?
Uh, Chad.
That's who you are.
Chad Beerman, one oh five South Twenty Street, in Indianola. So in your, you may have in your packet some information regarding our variance request, and thank you for considering it. We purchased a property in Southern Warren County, and before we went ahead and applied for a nine one one address, we went ahead and asked for a variance on the, on, on, on a new driveway. The existing, the property comes with an existing driveway into the old homestead that was there. There is also a field entrance to the west that's on top of the hill, which is a bit safer of an entrance and a more preferred entrance for, for us. So, the request is to have that, that new entrance or the nine one one address at that new entrance on top of the hill, which appears to be a safer location. And it doesn't meet the site requirements as indicated based on the current ordinances, current code. So, when I was there with David, I entertained, he entertained my thought process on just backing up a step and looking at the, the roadway from a little further distance off the edge roadway. And because he did that, it, it, it prodded me to maybe do a little videography and take some photos for you all. So I did that, and I, I feel like I did a decent job of showing him that it does in fact allow a better sight picture of the roadway. So, so, um, I guess our request is to ultimately, our goal is to ultimately get a nine one one address that we can ultimately build on our property.
I'm just gonna give you kind of the facts of when we went out there. We denied it because at the top of that hill, he had three hundred fifteen feet to the east, we require five hundred, and he had greater than five hundred to the west. The safest spot was three hundred fifteen feet to the east and three hundred twenty feet to the west. Still pretty far away from our standard. And we measure it from the shoulder of the road, 'cause that's where the cars travel. And we can't do it off the ditch and stuff, 'cause we know grass grows in the ditch, weeds grow, trees grow. So, it's just the standard to do it from the roadway. So at that distance, the only thing that would work is if you lower the speed limit on the road to forty miles an hour for three hundred fifteen feet. And being kind of a low-volume road, it's probably not gonna be followed, but that's a decision for you guys to make, so. And I will note that we've looked at this driveway once before, as for a neighbor, and we actually may, had them do their driveway at the bottom of the hill where they had five hundred feet. He's unfortunate on his property, there's nowhere on those two parcels that he owns where he could put a driveway that would require, that would meet the si- the sight distance. So his only option would be either be lowering the speed limit or try to get a, a entrance through somebody else's parcel, so.
What, low, uh, low volume, what's that mean, on the road?
Just about forty-five cars a day is what the DOT states, so. And you know, with houses going up everywhere, it's going up, not down, so.
And engineering would be okay with if we lowered the speed limit to forty?
It would be, but it'd be a forty mile an hour speed zone out in the middle of nowhere, so it probably wouldn't be followed. Just, it's not like these right next to communities where you have really high density of houses and you lower it because of the density. So you could lower it, but probably won't slow people down. Any more questions?
What was wrong with the other entrance?
But there's nothing wrong with it per se. It's actually the, the entrance that was for the original homestead. It's a, it's a very well-drained and well-leveled entrance. It's just got a lot less, uh, sight distance as you approach from the, from the west. It's got a completely fine sight distance as you approach from the east. So, when we purchased it, I, I didn't even think we'd be in this position today because of that original driveway. But as we got a little bit further into it, we realized that, um, moving it to the top of the hill would be ideal. And that even at that point, I didn't think we'd be in this position, given that A, it's at the top of the hill, and then B, there's a driveway for the neighbor directly across the street as well. So, so here we are, here we are.
What's your, what's your plans with the current homestead? I mean, that's where the current driveway is.
Yeah, the driveway goes back to the south a quarter mile to the current homestead. We are going to stop the driveway a little bit short of that and build a house in the opening. House in probably a barn of some sort.
One more time, Tim, where are the sites, three hundred fifteen?
On the top of the hill, you're at two hundred and fifty feet, and that's the existing driveway he's talking about. So two hundred and fifty feet, that would actually be a lower speed zone of, I think, thirty-five, according to the engineering book we use, so. That, that'd be thirty-five, that'd be at the top end of a thirty-five mile an hour speed zone.
Now, now I'm talking about the site.
The site distance, yes, two hundred and fifty feet to the west at that entrance that he was just speaking of, at the top of the hill.
So what about the original old homestead, where it was supposed to be southern area instead of, or southern?
Is that the driveway that goes back to your homestead at the top of the hill?
That, that's the field entrance. Where we wanna move it to is the current field entrance.
But, but the old homestead?
The old one's much worse, I think. It's probably around two hundred feet.
And you could do it there? No answer?
No, any, it doesn't have an address. Anytime we upgrade an entrance for our county ordinance, that's when we look at the s- the sight distances. 'Cause we know there are a bunch out there that don't meet requirements based off past, uh, ordinances and requirements, so. But once we go to upgrade it, that's where we try to enforce our ordinance and our sight distance requirements.
Thank you for your time in answering the question. Need further questions, please? Okay. I will take a motion. Do you want to, too, or is it moved?
Well, Roger gets something for us. I guess I would move that we, John, I hope this is appropriate, that we would allow the top of the hill entry to the property.
You wanna approve the variance?
I'm gonna approve the variance, okay.
That's your motion?
I would move that, yeah.
Can I make a friendly amendment that we'll always give them the thirty-five miles per hour for that, it's the west side?
We can find a spot up there. It's not exactly the center of the driveway, it's actually where that mailbox is.
Mm-hmm.
That one is, would be a forty mile an hour speed limit. But you'd probably, when we get thirty-five, just, uh...
I would consider it to be a friendly amendment.
Okay, thank you.
But we'll have to revisit that when we go out and get measurements and stuff to make it different.
I would second that. Any further discussion? Jason?
Sho.
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, all right, item five, consider speed limit change to forty-five miles per hour on Forty-third Avenue from Highway twenty-eight to, uh, parentheses, two hundred twenty, and parentheses, feet north of Ford Street with possible action.
This is another one of those areas, just off, uh, go north off of Highway twenty-eight where the density of houses is getting, there's, there's getting a lot out there, so. It's actually forty miles an hour going from Highway twenty-eight to just north of that road, so. It kinda goes along lines with what we've been doing a lot in the area, 'cause there's been a lot of houses built.
Okay, I would consider a motion to change the speed limit.
So, move.
Second. Further discussion? Jason?
Sho.
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye. Item six, consider speed limit change to forty-five miles per hour on G fourteen from Tenth Avenue, parentheses, Warren slash Madison County line, parentheses, to the east, uh, six, six, sixty-seven, fifty feet with possible action.
It's already forty-five miles an hour almost to the county line. We're just adding a few hundred feet more because Madison County wanted to extend it into their county. So, right now we have a forty-five mile an hour zone in there that's two hundred, three hundred feet long that we need to, or a fifty-five in between the forty-five that we need to get rid of, so.
I'll move to, uh, change the speed limit on G fourteen from ten to the east six thousand seven hundred fifty square feet, forty-five miles per hour.
Second.
Further discussion? Tracy?
Sho.
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, item seven, consider resolution regarding radios for P twenty-five radio communications for one county nine one one system users and use of tower by Norwalk nine one one entities with possible action.
Within your packet is a proposed resolution regarding this issue. Um, you may recall from all of the work that's been done on this particular project that there being radios purchased for the various, uh, fire departments and other E nine one one users. Uh, one community, Norwalk, had already purchased, um, their radios. We were trying to work out, um, a way to have an agreement for all of the pa- uh, participants and also to provide the services as needed. Norwalk has a need to be on a tower eventually. They need to be moved to a, to a better location. Uh, we will have the tower, uh, the Norwalk site tower, which will be on WRA, uh, land. We're trying to get the leases approved. We have to go through this step to approve this resolution so we can move on with the leases. Um, we did, we were able to, I shouldn't say we, Doug was able, Doug McCaslin was able to get ahold of the, uh, fire chief, and their radio cost would amount to about two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That's within all of the numbers that we have for all of the different entities across the county, so they're not the highest and they're not the lowest. They're within the range.
And that's Norwalk?
That's Norwalk, correct. So this is kind of a way to make sure everybody gets what they need, and Norwalk will be even, able eventually to put their tow, their communications system on the, the WRA tower.
Okay.
So I would ask that you consider that resolution.
I accept a motion to accept this resolution for the radio communication system.
I would move it.
Second.
Need further discussion?
Very nice job, Don and Doug. There's, if you can't read between the lines there, there's some compromises that, uh, sometimes occur in the process, especially one of our communities is on a different system, already has box and radios. And so, it sort of evens things out a little bit and makes it palatable for, uh, those that are assisting and funding it to also make sure they're getting some use out of it. Well done, I appreciate it.
Sho.
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Item eight, consider waiver and consent to potential conflict of interest for Allers and Cooney with possible action.
This is also in regards to the nine one one communication system. Allers and Cooney represents us, and we have their agreement on bond counsel for the nine one one communications as well. One of the sites that we're looking at leasing is, um, Martinstale St. Mary Community School District owns the land. They have reached out to Allers and Cooney to look at the paperwork, um, for that lease. So Allers sent us a request where they wanted to notify us that there's potential conflict of interest because they represent us and they represent Martinstale St. Mary School District. So this is simply, um, an acknowledgement of the board that you recognize that there's a potential conflict when they look at Martinst- St. Mary's paperwork that has been prepared by our county attorney's office in regards to this transaction, because they work with us on other items.
Are you taking questions, Megan?
Okay, bring it.
For the benefit of the public, do you know approximately what the Martinstale lease is sort of shaping up to look like?
That's how.
We will be leasing, uh, the premises for a dollar, um, a year.
A dollar a year? I just want to have that on the record.
May I take a motion to approve this? Will you vary consent?
Some move.
Second.
Further discussion? Tracy?
Sho.
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, item nine, consider resolution approving preliminary official statement for ten million dollars in general obligation capital loan notes, series two thousand nineteen with possible action.
Um, this is your preliminary official statement for the issuance of the nine one one communications, uh, ten million dollar bond issuance for two thousand and nineteen. And this goes hand in hands with that bond rating call that we just had. Kinda goes through all of that, the large packet, as well as the last, um, county audit will be submitted for the bond issuance. Allers and Cooney has reviewed, I have reviewed, our, um, fiduciary at DA Davidson has worked on it, as well as our underwriters at Northland Security. So this document is what goes forward to the bond purchasers, um, when we issue these bonds.
I'll, I'll move, uh, a resolution approving the preliminary official statement for the general obligation capital loan notes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Tracy?
Sho.
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, item ten, consider Allers and Cooney engagement agreement on the ten million dollar GO capital loan note, series two thousand nineteen with possible action.
Uh, within your packet is an engagement agreement with Allers and Cooney to act as bond counsel for the issuance of our ten million dollar general obligation capital loan note, series two thousand and nineteen, for the nine one one communications equipment. Their fee is a flat fee of twelve thousand six hundred dollars for the services rendered in this agreement.
I would move the engagement agreement for Allers and Cooney on ten thou- ten million dollar GO capital loan notes, series twenty nineteen.
Second.
Further discussion? Tracy?
Sho.
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, item eleven, consider resolution approving bond disclosure policy with possible action.
Uh, this is prepared by Allers and Cooney. This is a bond disclosure policy, um, for those continued disclosures that we have when we issue bonds. This outlines what the county's responsibility is. Um, it does define that the budget coordinator is responsible for making sure that these items are done. Um, that's your disclosure coordinator. Uh, the county appointed the budget coordinator to act as that disclosure coordinator. We do have a third-party agreement with DA Davidson for that continuing disclosure, but there does have to be a point for Smitha County. Um, this is that policy that outlines what our responsibilities are with those bond issuances. We have one on file, I think the last time that the board, um, approved was in two thousand and fourteen. So this is just an update to that.
I move the bond disclosure policy resolution.
Second.
Further discussion?
Sho.
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Item twelve, budget report.
Before you in your packets, we have the October, um, two thousand and nineteen budget reports. We'll start with our fund balances. Um, as we know, our general basic is down because of that payment that we have to Motorola that this issuance of the ten million will reimburse, uh, the general fund for that payment that we have out with them. Um, general supplemental, our other, uh, taxing funds, of course, this is the first-year general supplemental that, uh, the levy ra- raised, so we're not transferring tho- that money. The money comes in as taxes come in. Other items of note, the mental health fund. We know that we paid more to the, um, fiscal agent last year than we had previously. Rural basic is up because of those lost payments. Secondary roads is down, however, um, I, there's bridge money that he's waiting on. And the way that we transfer, um, funds to secondary roads changed this year because of that loss. We do a monthly transfer of loss as opposed to that large tax transfer. Overall, none of the items are, uh, of issue. When you look at the overall, we're down about six hundred thousand dollars when you take out those capital projects, which I don't really count into, 'cause those are specifying. Do you have any questions in regards to the fund balances at this time? When we look at expenditures, as of the end of October, we still have the same four, um, budgets that are running above the anticipated thirty-three percent for this time of year. Um, we know that in the auditor's office, there's annual agreements for GIS, Atlas, and iVoter machines that were paid out at the beginning of the year that are making that budget show a little, um, higher than we would anticipate. In the sheriff's department, we still know that, um, we had a lot of accrued invoices for the inmates, as well as for fuel and medical, overtime, uh, motor vehicle maintenance, radios. All of those were running, have been running a little bit high. So we'll have to monitor that to see if it can even out by the end of the, the budget. The, um, recorder's office, we know that, um, there was archiving that was approved last year in the recorder's office. That ended up being an accrued invoice, so we had amended her budget last year, but we'll need to amend this one because it didn't get paid out until this fiscal. So we know that that amendment is needed. And then finally, we have the general services is running at about fifty-six percent. However, forty percent of that budget is for property and liability insurance that we pay in July. So, we would anticipate that to be running heavy. Um, comparison between fiscal years, um, there's just, eh, there's so many changes between the departments. It's a, um, as you can see, there's more that are not, um, the same as, as previous. Some of the, the larger items, the sheriff's department, um, item four, those are those in accrued invoices in fiscal year twenty making that large difference. The county engineer, those projects vary so much by year that there's, comparing apples to apples is a little bit difficult. Some of the other larger, conservation board, we know that in fiscal year nineteen, conservation board had a land acquisition for three hundred and some thousand, so you're not going to be able to compare apples to apples. Nothing within any of these is concerning to me, that there isn't anything that jumps out as being a problem within those. They're all, um, explainable through what we already know through the budget process. Do you have any questions on the expenditures to date? Um, our revenues, we would anticipate roughly thirty-three percent of revenues at the end of October. Um, we have multiple departments that are not quite there. Um, auditor's office, their election income is not received until after November elections. Treasurer's office, that interest income increases as taxes are received in our, in our fund balances, as well as when CDs mature with those monthly maturities. Attorney's office, the fine fees are not received until later in the year. Department of Human Services, LAE is paid quarterly, so we've only received the one payment to date. Decant services, we are reimbursed based on the expenditures, so what we've been reimbursed is proportional to what has been expended. Conservation board, repayment is not received until November. District court, those are miscellaneous reimbursements, um, they're not huge numbers. And they come in varying, so that, that one's, we'll see if that, how that works out for the year. And then, of course, capital projects, the bond issuance, we had twenty point four scheduled to be issued. That was for the Justice Center, we have not issued those, so those, um... So when you look at the overall numbers, it looks like we're only at twenty-six percent, but that's because of those bonds. So I went ahead and added another line and took those bonds out. Really, we're at forty-three percent, and so we're really on track as far as revenues go. Um, again, revenues comparing year to year, there isn't anything that I found concerning, um, as far as not being able to match up our, our departments. They were all within the budget, known to, to myself or the board. So, if you have any questions on revenues for me?
Item on the agenda is item twelve budget, uh, excuse me, item thirteen, receive and file reports. A reporter, B, Veteran Affairs, C, General Assistants, and D, Humane Society. Any questions on those reports?
I move that we receive and file the four reports.
Second.
Further questions? Discussion? Tracy?
Sho.
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Item fourteen, supervisor's report. Supervisor, Deco?
Sure, since the last meeting, um, some of the things that I, I did, uh, we had a team serves meeting, a team serves contract meeting. We did, uh, a couple of closed session meetings. We had a few special meetings, um, one of which was to certify a vote. A hundred-minute Norwalk walk, I attended a quarterly meeting there. Uh, had a user group meeting last Thursday, um, at our architect's office, um... I'll give you an update on that. And, um, met with the sheriff for a one-on-one, met with our engineer for a one-on-one, uh, attended a, telephonically attended a bond rating call with S and P. Met with a preco- cast concrete business owner occurring on below productions. And, okay, going back up to the, uh, last user group meeting that shot it. Costs continue to come down. That's a good thing, they need to. Working on, uh, an upcoming bid date, still on, on schedule for a January bid date, um... Lots of, uh, communications back and forth and, and along with, uh, DCISOM, too. But, all in all, uh, project costs are, are coming down. I think we are making big strides there in, uh, reduction, and I think that's important. And then timing-wise, uh, what I foresee is that around the holidays, um, bid packet, packages go out with, uh, a late January bid date. And so, you know, I think at that point, we'll have a, a very firm grasp on what the numbers look like. And I think that's prudent, because it's difficult to make decisions if you're still speculating on what the cost is. And so at that point, we'll have an opportunity to look at the cost, look at the numbers. One of the things that I think's important to let the public know, uh, and my colleagues know, is that, um... Some of, one of the things that we really spent some time with last, uh, last Thursday were, were interior walls. And a lot of the walls were originally, um, construction walls, so imagine two-by-fours or metal studs or whatever, or blocks or any of those things. And, uh, a lot of those interior walls are going to be removed, and we're gonna look at, um, furniture walls. So, um, the, a lot of the core offices, uh, county attorney's office, some of those interior walls can get, uh, changed to a, a renewable, um, furniture wall. I think that will also be helpful. So anyways, that's, uh, that is the update.
Great to hear. Supervisor, follow?
Yes, um, other than the meetings that we all attend, uh, I had a meeting with the Blooms Chamber. He might would do, well, workplace development in Iowa's due date.
Thank you. And also the meetings that we all attend, um, I had a employer reentry roundtable, uh, over at Mitchellville concerning inmates and, is it that? Is that better? Great, thank you. Um, it concern, concerns the inmates, uh, being back into society, and how, um, we had a presentation a couple months back at a board meeting about removing the box um, that talks about people, uh, wanting to at least get an interview who have been, um, past felons. And, um, it doesn't negate any, uh, background checks on our part, or any other requirements that we fulfill. Um, it just allows that, um, person an opportunity to, um, get in the door and explain their situation. Uh, it was quite enlightening, uh. Another meeting I attended was, um. Also the canvassing, the nine-one-one communication council, uh, that's the state nine-one-one board, and the ISICS board, which is the, um, state communications, um, board that Motorola is in charge of getting together, also the bond rating call, and a Liberty Center sewer, um, meeting to address some concerns there, and, um, a public health leadership academy session, um, there should be, this is, um, gonna be about a six month session every, uh, seven Mondays to talk about public health and how it affects at the county level, um, it's put on by the state, it's quite informative. And today we had a state audit exit interview, um, and that is my report.
Chairman and I have one more, I forgot. Um, last Friday night, my spouse and I attended INSEF gala at Carver Winery. This is the first time that I brought her, but I've been to it before. It raises funds to the school, school district, and I think they had their best year financially ever, and, I don't know, I don't know if the numbers are accurate. I won't publicize it, but it's north of twenty, and somewhere between twenty and twenty-five thousand, it was, was raised between some silent auctions, tickets. I don't think they did, uh, a live auction as well, so it was a fun time. But anyways, it was a good deal at school.
Anything further? Okay, moving on to item fifteen, which is public input. All right, and we do have a timer up here, so be cautious of that. And we can't take any, um, action on the comments due to requirements of the open meeting law, but, um, we may do so in the future. So no public input will be allowed for any of today's agenda items. But the time is now yours. Okay, seen and hearing none. Our next meeting date is December third, two thousand nineteen at nine thirty AM, and, um, item seventeen is motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? Jason?
Sho.
Aye.
De Cook?
Aye.
McIntyre?